Rich Roberts is here. Ryan Allard.
Here.
Joseph Hammer here, James, Jim Hughes. George Oekel.
Jimmy's coming in.
Okay. Jim is here, George Oekel.
Yes, I'm here.
And Jim is here, how about George?
I don't see him.
Okay, Tom Dean. Tony Ho Mickey.
Here.
Dave Edwards.
Yeah.
Mike Vera.
Yeah.
David Drake.
Here.
Peter Lambrouney.
Here.
Hazim Korkatovit. Okay.
Alright, so I come up with nine. So we'll see Dave Drake and Pete Lambrouney for right now. The we have doesn't say that these are public hearings, but I guess they all are because they're all special permits. The way we'll do public hearings is first hear from the applicant. Then the commission might have questions for the applicant, there'll be some back and forth. At that point, we will open it up to members of the public who wish to speak either in favor of or against the application or who might have questions. Following that, we'll go back to the applicant, let them respond to any of the comments that came up. Let the members of the commission ask any questions that they might have based on the public commentary. If following all of that discussion, the commission feels that it has enough information to make a decision on the application. We will close the public hearing and deliberate on it. If for whatever reason, we don't feel we have enough information or there are questions that remain to be answered. We may continue the hearing to a later date. And we'll tell you what time and what date that will be here. If we do do that. So with that, we'll do the first item 3.1. Application 2089 21Z. Aaron Tuponts, 147 Main Street. Seeking special use permit in accordance with section 52D1 for the conversion of the building for retail and personal service business for wellness and Reiki Center.
Okay, hi, um, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Erin Tuponts and I own 147 Main Street in Old Weathersfield. I'm applying for a change in use from residential to business at this location. I'm currently a Reiki master teacher, I'm qualified hypnotherapist. And I'm looking to open a wellness center here. And a small gift shop selling crystals, stones, books, other small items. The Wellness Center will include up to four other practitioners and each with, each of which will be completing one-on-one sessions at varying times. The gift shop will accommodate existing Main Street foot traffic and clients and the number of visitors at any given time will be somewhat minimal. Given such, I'm applying for approval under section 6 dot 2 dot D and the parking requirements for reduction in the required number of parking spaces. For the past several years, I've been working from 135 Main Street, many of you know that to be the herbal room, the Red Barn. During that time, I've been instructing my clients to use the public parking because the woman that owns that building is not keen on people parking back there. Um, all of my clients have been doing that without problem. Um, a part of my process is to remind them at the time of booking, they must use the free lots. I also have a scheduling system that reminds clients before they come in that they have to park in the free parking and there's also a very big blurb on my website. I am fully aware of the parking issues that have been going on in Old Weathersfield. I live here as well on Church Street. It's not my intention to add to any neighborhood concerns. But I do want to add to the area, you know, 147 Main was a frame shop years ago and another owner took it on for a couple of years and kind of let it go back to residential, but I would like to bring it back and have some use for the community. I'm planning on calling it the Blackbird House, kind of in honor of the witch of Blackbird Pond and kind of playing in some of the history of the town. So any visitors that would be coming to 147 Main Street will be required to use the free parking at both Keeney Memorial Center and the Firehouse.
Okay. Um, how many employees do you have?
I have no, there will be no employees. I'll be subleasing them to other practitioners. Um, I, I pretty much work on my own.
Sounds like this is like mostly one-on-one, not necessarily like classes, you're not bringing in groups of people except like, you know, maybe here and there, but by and large, your, your daily activity is just going to be for like four people, four practitioners working at the same time with each with one client, so that most people we can expect is four people needing parking spaces.
And that would be the most because typically people don't practice, don't hold sessions at the same times, so it would be an in and out, hour sessions at a time. Um, but yeah, it would be very limited with the amount of people in and out of the building and I wouldn't even see that we'd have all four people there at all, all the time, you know, because just of people's schedules.
Perfect, thank you.
What, um, what days of the week and hours of the day would you plan to operate?
Um, well, I'm being a practitioner, there is some flexibility, nothing past, you know, I don't, I don't schedule an appointment past six o'clock at night, but you know, appointments can run anywhere between an hour and an hour and a half. Um, some weekend use, but nothing, I mean, I would be flexible, I'm flexible with my schedule, I'd be flexible with them. Anyone that wanted to work out of here, but I would think it would be more like a nine to five situation with maybe some available evenings.
So just as an example, I know Friday night, you know, there's a nearby restaurant, so there's probably a peak demand then, but it sounds like when they're getting into dinner, you would be closing probably on Friday and similarly Saturday night, it sounds like you're not going to be open either, right?
Not at all. Honestly, with the noise, sometimes it comes from the Charles, I wouldn't want to be practicing at that time as much as you do noise control, they do, there is some sound that comes off of the Charles. Um, so yes, it night times would not be ideal for anyone being open at that point.
Thank you.
The gift shop would be mostly during the day, on weekends where there's a lot of foot traffic, you know, events like holidays on Main, that type of thing.
And is the, I'm sorry, the gift shop, will there be a staff person in there?
No, it would just be open when I'm there. No, I'm not planning on staffing that at all.
Okay.
Erin, can you, can you just explain a little bit oh, what the other four people will be doing? Are they doing Reiki as well?
Um.
Is it practitioners of Reiki?
No, I don't think so. What ideally, what I'd like to see happen is I'd like to get, now I'm, I'm friendly with the naturopaths, obviously, I'm not going to do that to Dr. Reale, I really like him. But I would like to get one person that, you know, it has like a naturopathic, I'd like different modalities, I, I don't have, um, I haven't gone that far to figure out who yet. But possibly some acupuncture or not all Reiki because it wouldn't make a lot of sense, although I wouldn't say no to that, I think it really just depends. I would like a therapist possibly, you know, people that can do one-on-one sessions that might like a nice location and a beautiful house to do it in or building.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to understand, I think you've answered my question, is that the other practitioners will also be low volume. Right, they're not, they're not going to be turning customers out every 10 minutes, let's say.
Oh, no, no, each of these sessions that people give would be at least an hour, yeah, if, between an hour and an hour and a half at the most, it's not like people are going to be coming in and out all the time and you can't do back-to-back sessions either, it takes a lot of energy, so I, I, I definitely think that, you know, anyone, these would be people that would be meeting for an hour or so at a time.
Yeah, just, just one other quick question. In your present operation, you, you said that you've asked people at the park, either in the street or probably at Keeney or one of the other places, have you gotten any pushback, any complaints from, from people because of that?
I don't even ask them to park on the streets because I, you know, especially because I understand, um, I have them park at the Keeney Center or the Firehouse, mostly the Keeney Center because people don't really understand the Firehouse parking at this point, but I've gotten, gotten pushback from one person. They're very flexible and very open. And they like to walk through the town, you know, so a lot of people come and, you know, they'll come for an hour session with me and then go get lunch or something, so they usually like to take time to walk through town.
Okay, thank you. Right. Anyone else on the commission have questions? I guess I have a quick one for Peter. Would the various kinds of professionals and practitioners that she described all fall within professional services and none of them would be medical, which might have different requirements?
Yeah, our, our definition of medical is pretty generic, so we felt that fitting it into the personal services category was probably the better definition for this, I mean, I didn't hear about the therapist until tonight, but the other practitioners we felt were were certainly all personal service businesses.
Yeah, I mean, that frankly is exactly why I asked the question.
And Peter, I, could I just ask you one in your memo, you talk about either seven spaces or 11 spaces if you looked at the whole gross floor area, and I was just curious, do we typically just look at the net actual service and sales area as opposed to basing it on gross in a situation like this?
Normally we would, but as you look at the floor plan and you've got kitchen space, you've got some things that you wouldn't normally see in a personal service establishment. I did it both ways, just to give you an idea of what the low and what the high end would be. As you deliberate on this, I think it's more important to understand from the applicant how the business would actually be conducted, you know, rather than using the gross numbers, so I feel a lot more comfortable based on the explanation of, you know, how they will conduct things rather than just using the, you know, the high number anyway.
Okay, thanks.
So Peter, if I could just follow up, so you, you're suggesting it should be seven then, right?
It, it's probably somewhere in between, but yeah, the, the seven number, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with, given, you know, what they, what they're proposing to do there. The only que, the only other question I had is there was a, there's a room in the back that's identified as a, as a classroom, so maybe we could get a better understanding of, of, you know, what that means and how many people might potentially come to that classroom at any point in time and how frequently that might happen.
With regards to classes, um, I do at times, because I am a teacher, my classes aren't any more than three people at a time and it's usually on a Sunday morning where there's not a lot going on. Um, I don't offer classes any other time but Sunday mornings, usually for a number of hours, but they tend to be very small, not just because of COVID restrictions, but even before COVID. Um, it's hard to manage a class that's too big, so.
Okay.
And, and, um, yeah, so.
Pe, Peter, David Drake. Just one, basically the only question here is the parking, right?
Well, it's, it's, it's a change of use too, but yes, I think.
Yeah, but I understand that.
Yeah, the, the issue comes down to parking, as, as you guys are aware.
Yeah.
It's change of use because it's going from residential back to business?
Yes, the, the previous owner had eliminated the business uses and was using the property for residential purposes, so it went all the way back to a residential use for, for a short period of time.
Okay. Okay. Does anyone else on the commission have any questions for the applicant? If not, are there any members of the public that want to comment on this application? If you could either raise your physical or virtual hands so I can call on you. Norm's iPad. You just please give us your name and address for the record. I think you're muted.
Are you asking me a question, Peter?
I think it works now.
There we go, there we go, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, Norm Cavoli, 14 Center Street. Diagonally across from 147 Main. And you know, I don't have any problem with that kind of business. It's, that's what the town needs, it seems to be fine. Parking is a question, I don't think it's a problem. I've been watching parking since the Charles Restaurant opened up. And I gave Peter a little written survey. What I found is that noon time and at evening when the restaurants open, the lot behind the Firehouse fills up very quickly. And cars will park illegally there and get ticketed. Spots in Keeney are never full. The only full time was when Keeney had that Shakespeare Festival. It got filled up. The lady seems very nice, she's trying to keep the cars parking away from this area. The Charles Restaurant tried that too. They put up signs on the street. Please don't park here, use the public lots, we love our neighbors. I'm watching cars and a couple would pull up and drive away, others would park there. On a busy nights, we would have about a third of the street filled with those signs. He has changed the signs, the signs now read no parking. And people will not park there. They will pull up and pull away. About a third of the people, including myself, have taken down the parking signs. So they do park in front of the restaurant, in front of my house and further down. Even with no signs, cars only parked on the odd, the even side of Center Street and very few on the odd. So you can expect some of the customers will park on Main Street, maybe on Center Street towards Main Street, and I don't foresee that a problem. There's enough legal parking to park, you know, extra cars. If they park illegally, they'll get tickets. Uh, they will probably park on Main Street. But again, that should not be a problem. So unless someone has a major concern, I don't see why parking should be a factor in this decision. Any questions on parking I can help you with?
Now, Peter did share your, your memo and your spreadsheet and actually it was very interesting and very, very helpful, not just for this application, but also to kind of get a better sense of how the, the signs work, you know, what the, you know, the parking behaviors generally have been and, and are and it was, it was, at least to me, it was useful information, just kind of generally as well as, you know, for this application.
Yeah, yeah, and busy nights during the week, nighttime and on weekends, when this, you know, business won't be open. The lots do fill up, always room at Keeney, but not behind the Firehouse. Main Street, I, I look at that, that looks awfully full also, and a few on Center Street. When the tent comes down and the restaurant's parking lot, that's going to open up 13 spots, 12 or 13. On the average, there was eight or nine cars with a high of 10 or 11 that parked on Center Street before the no parking signs went up. So if those no parking signs come down for whatever reason, cars that normally park on Center Street and Main Street could park in that parking lot. And it'll have less customers with nobody eating outside, at least temporarily. So I don't think there'll be a great parking concern in this business as the owner says, is only going to act at four or five, six cars a day at the off times and not weekends. So parking should not be a major negative impact on this application. And noise certainly won't be.
How come, how come nobody parks across the street on the odd side? Just laziness, nobody wants to walk across?
No, I talked to Peter, I think he said it correctly, people are too nice. They will park on the even side, almost all the way down the street. And the street's fairly narrow, so they will not park in the other side, this is with no signs. I was amazed to see that. Okay, one or two will. If I park my car out in the front with these no parking signs, a few will park behind me and a few will park in front. So on the averages, maybe three or four cars. Uh, but they, they park illegally sometime and they'll get tickets. But, you know, now with the no parking signs up, there's total of three, four cars on the average on Center Street for the first hundred feet down from Main. People on the street complain, go ahead.
Well, I think also probably the vast majority of the patrons come in off Main Street rather than you know, backwards in through garden or woodland or something like that.
Correct. Yeah. Yes, again, if they went to this other location at 147 Main, they would look on the even side, the right side. And in front of the restaurant, he has a couple of handicapped yard signs, so people think that's handicap parking, so they'll park there. In front of my house, there's no signs, so they park there. From there on, most, I mean, people on the even side left the no parking signs up. But more than half on the odd side took them down. And people are parking in front of those houses. And on the averages, five or six residents' cars parked out there during the day. When this parking lot opens up at the Charles Restaurant, that should see a significant difference. Because there was no parking concerns last winter on Center Street. Some, because of the pandemic, his business probably wasn't as busy as he had hoped. But also they had that extra 10, 12, 13 spots.
Right. Alright, thank you. Okay, anyone else, anyone else in the public have any comments or questions? Anybody else? Alright, if not, we'll go back to the applicant and the commission. And does the applicant have any further comments based on Norm's testimony or anything that you want to cover before we adjourn the hearing?
I don't think I have anything to add at this point.
Okay. Alright, any, any final questions from the commission? If not, I guess.
I would make a motion to close.
Second, I guess. Before we do that, I have, I have one thing that I want to ask the applicant.
I jumped the gun, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Would you be amenable to having a condition of the approval that you request that your customers use public parking?
Oh, that would be fine, I'm doing that now, so that would be no different for me, so absolutely, I'm fine with that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's what I assumed, but I also thought that that might set a valuable precedent for others, we've attempted to put similar requests in the past in you know, approvals where the site doesn't necessarily provide all of the parking on site that the regulations might require, so.
Yeah, she mentioned that in her presentation, but I think having that as like, you know, approval is contingent on using the public parking, I think that's, I think you're right.
And I am, I'm certainly sympathetic to the whole community, I'm trying to add to it, I'm not trying to leave a very big footprint and, um, you know, I, like I said, I live on Church Street right here in Old Weathersfield also, so, I mean, I know I'm, I, I have no problem, you know, making sure that anyone that visits 147 Main Street is, is told that they need to park on, in, in the free parking and I have no problem asking them to move, which I had to do at the Red Barn frequently because 130, 135 Main Street didn't like people parking back there, so at times I have to tell clients to please move their car and they never have a problem, they understand.
Okay. No, I appreciate that and I, I think, you know, we also have to bear in mind that, you know, well, you're committed to doing the right thing, this is a land use approval that runs with buildings so that, you know, 20 years from now when you've had it with the Reiki and somebody else wants to take over, they're bound by the same conditions.
That makes sense.
Okay. Alright, and Ryan had made a motion to close the public hearing and Joe had seconded it. Um, any discussion? If not, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Right, hearing is closed, does someone want to make a motion so that we can have a discussion?
I would move that we approve the application as presented and waive the provision of off street parking if we need to include that language and I would make it subject one condition, which is that the applicant will request that patrons of the establishment use I guess the town public parking in the area.
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Mike. Is there any discussion?
Is there any consideration, do you see any need to put a limit on this so it doesn't run with the property, so it's like a five-year limit? So the next person comes in, change of use, we don't end up stuck.
Well, I mean, if there is a change of use, they have to come back.
I, I understand changes, change, a different, someone who doesn't have her same interest that she lives right in the community and maybe not operate in the same fashion, I'm just bringing it up. Alright, if no one else, alright, I just, for discussion, anyone else has any concerns, I'm then.
If, if I, uh, just kind of piggyback on that, Peter. What would constitute a change in use that would require someone to come back and this whole parking issue then would kick up again? How, how would that play out just in the future? Just so the question was brought up, I'm curious now.
Sure, sure, so if, um, if the retail space was expanded beyond the floor plan, that would certainly trigger an, an increased intensity in parking. That's primarily the, the, the biggest one. Or if the, you know, kitchen was removed and some of the other spaces that aren't used for personal service increased in square footage, that would also trigger another review by the commission, so there's a couple of, and then obviously if it changed to another use completely, it would have to come back.
So it's always reviewed?
Any, anything out of the public, I mean, this, the current usage, right?
Yes, yes.
So things, things like law office, real estate office, insurance office, doctor's office definitely would have to come back and we'd review it all over again?
Yes.
That'd be a different use, right, that would fall under the medical?
Uh, personal service and, you know, partial retail, so, so that's a separate and distinct category from office.
I guess, Peter, the, the real question is, do you foresee any scenario that could increase the in and out of this place without a review in the future? I mean, someone having the right to just increase the in and out traffic, more parking and would not have to come back to us, is there any plausible scenario like that in your mind?
Well, another, another Reiki master who wants to operate a wellness center with a small amount of retail, that would probably be it, so, and we haven't seen too many of those, so it's it's probably likely it would have to come back at some point in the future.
Alright.
And then, and then hopefully on top of that, as, as we've noted, we're, we're trying to work on adding parking in close proximity to this, so hopefully at some point in the not-so-distant future, there'll be additional public parking available as well and you know, this, on this end of town, so.
Peter, you mentioned the House of Images, could you tell, tell us what that was about and if they ever came before us?
So that was, that was a frame shop operated by Charlie Ford and his wife. They, I believe, had been operating the frame shop since 1974. I don't think it, back then, went through planning and zoning, so it was, it was a long time business that as was just noted, only, only closed a handful of years ago.
I just wanted to mention that for the record. I just wanted to mention that for the record. All right, thanks. Did anyone want to, you know, take any of these? Comments and add them as proposed stipulations to the motion? Were we comfortable going ahead?
Richard, I, I'm pretty comfortable going ahead. I think it's low volume as is. And if, in essence, you know, just about anything that gets changed, has to come back to this commission. And I, I think we'll have another bite at the apple in the future. And I'm not. Comfortable putting, you know, an imposition on, on this person and the business that they're trying to run. For a number of years. So I'd be okay with just leaving that off. I don't know what others think.
I think it's good.
I agree with that. And frankly, you know, I think that as, as presented, you know, the applicant made clear they're not. You know, they're not operating nights or Friday nights or Saturday nights. And it seems to me if somebody knew where to come in and go till. Ten o'clock on both Friday and Saturday, you know, but I think that could potentially warrant us. Looking at it again as a material change even. And that to me is probably the only, the only thing that has potential that. We need to even worry about, I think.
Yeah, I, I agree. And I, I still support and, and second Joe's motion with that one stipulation.
Okay. All right, anyone else just kind of last call? If not, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Right, motion carries. Congratulations.
Lucky.
Thank you.
All right, move on to item three point two, application twenty ninety five twenty one Z. Albinus Buskavicious, six thirteen Maple Street. Special permit in accordance with section three, six, G four. For the construction of a two hundred and forty square foot storage shed at six thirteen Maple Street. And if you could just please identify yourself by name and address for the record and tell us what it is you're proposing to do.
My name is Albinus Buskavicious. And I live in a sixth, at six thirteen Maple Street in Weathersfield. And I'm planning to build a two hundred forty square foot storage shed. I have a shed right now, but. It's time to repair it. It's kind of start rotten little by little. And I decided to build a little bigger. Want to put all the furniture in winter time there or bicycles. Because I have only one car garage and. I don't want to put stuff in a basement. That's why I decided to build a bigger one. And nobody complains so far. Neighbors are, my relationship is good with neighbors and. I never had problems with neighbors and I don't think it's gonna block something. I have, like, there are trees in the backyard, neighbor's tree, so neighbor's blocking and. Shed is not, not gonna be in the way any neighbors. And that's it, I think.
Okay. So you're, are you gonna keep the existing shed that's already back there and just put this one next to it or are you gonna replace?
In the beginning, I, I thought I'm gonna take it down, but. Now we're using fireplace insert in winter time, so I thought I'm just gonna keep the wood in my old shed.
Thought you were gonna burn the old sheds.
No, I'm just, right now I'm keeping wood outside. I'm putting tarp on the top, but I think it's. Will be a good space for the wood.
Okay, so the wood with the tarp on it is what's next to the existing shed back there now?
Yes, right now.
Okay, okay. What are you gonna put in just yard stuff, like tools and lawn mowers, that sort of stuff?
Yeah, lawn tractor, outside furniture and bicycles and.
Not gonna have electricity or plumbing in it?
No, no.
Okay, all right.
I see the new proposed shed is twelve by twenty. How, how big is, how big is the old shed?
Ten by fourteen.
Is the reason this is up for our review because, what, it exceeds the allowable footprint that? The shed could be, Peter?
At two hundred square foot.
Two hundred, two hundred square foot per shed. You can have up to three accessory structures, but none of them. Unless it would be a detached garage can be larger than two hundred square feet each.
So the deviation here is what, forty square feet?
Forty square feet, correct.
So I'm just curious, a question for, for you, the applicant. Are you building this from scratch? Could you change the dimensions or are you buying something already made? Is that why? You're constrained to two forty and not two hundred?
I'm building myself. But I have already, al- already like foundation blocks and frame. The bottom frame, twelve by twenty.
So you started the construction before you had the approvals?
Yeah, actually I never did that before, so I didn't know actually. And that's why I stopped building and I want to get approval.
Okay. If you had known, would two hundred square feet been enough?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah. If I knew in the beginning, I, I'm, I think I would build right now like ten by twenty and would be two hundred square feet, but. Because I started already, I had the frame and. So if it's possible to get that permit, I would continue building that.
All right, anyone else on the commission have any questions for the applicant? All right, if not, any members of the public that want to speak on this application? Anybody in the public? Right, take that as a no. Anything else anybody has before we close the hearing? If not, someone want to make a motion? Motion, motion by Jim, second by Ryan to close the public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, hearings closed. Someone want to make a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion, Chairman, that we approve the proposal to put. A two hundred and forty square foot, I guess accessory building shed. As presented by this applicant. So. Just to state my thinking and reasons on it is that. I mean, had he known, he probably would have, would have stayed within the regulations. Apparently, he, he did not know and he's a little bit over. And given that it's such a small percentage change above the two hundred anyways. I just don't see that it makes sense to have him undo and do extra work if he's already. Got a foundation in place and framing. So I think we should just proceed with that.
Okay, is there a second to the motion? All right, give the second to Ryan.
I'll stop, I'll stop hoarding all the seconds, I promise.
Yeah.
No, it's okay. I have the last, I have the last one, Ryan.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion?
Maybe we shouldn't allow him to put anything in the forty square feet he's adding. Just has to leave that blank all the time.
Yeah, well, he's gonna walk around in there somehow.
All right, all in favor of the approval, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion approved, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
All right, next item three point three, application two oh nine seven twenty one Z. Kathleen Bagley, Town of Weathersfield, one fifty six Prospect Street. Eleanor Buck, Buck Wolf Nature Center special permit in accordance with section three, six. For a fourteen by twenty outdoor picnic pavilion at one fifty six Prospect Street.
Good evening, excuse me, Kathy Bagley, Director of Parks and Recreation and Social and Youth Services for the town. I'm here tonight with, also with the President of the Friends Association, Pat Yagman. Our, a member of the board, Tom Linden. And the Nature Center Director, who's also the town's youth development manager, Patrick Tellman. And we're here tonight to let you know that the friends have worked with staff to do a. Outdoor pavilion at the nature center just beyond the back of the nature center. And they're willing to donate the funds to have that happen. And what this will do is provide us with outdoor classroom space for the nature center for all the different programs that we run there. It would be a fourteen by twenty foot pavilion with a concrete pad that was sixteen feet. By twenty two feet. We're, we're excited about the opportunity to do this. And the process started as they always do with, with any park project. It started at the park board. They made a recommendation to the town council. To, to see, saying that it was a good project, would the council accept the donation? The council did accept the donation pending, as usual, all the different boards and commissions. That we may need to go through for approval. So we're here at planning and zoning to, for that process for approval for the, the picnic, the pavilion that'll be outdoors. It's kind of it in a nutshell.
Okay. Yeah, and the materials included a picture of what it looks like and where it would be both. Kind of on the ground and then aerial location. Where the red dot is no longer marking a tree.
Yes.
Does anybody on the commission have any questions for Kathy or any of the other individuals here this evening?
Kathy, just out of interest, one of the pictures shows where it's gonna be located, like. There's like a little green patch and there's a red building behind that. What is that building?
That's the nature center garage. There's a little garage between the nature, just past the nature center, the back of the nature center. And then we're gonna put the pavilion on the other side.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I, I've got a quick one, Kathy. With the, will, will you be increasing enrollment during these various programs or? Number of events or is this really gonna be used more to handle, you know, programs and, and numbers of, of kids that you already have?
Well, we, we do, we have a great summer camp program now that basically fills every summer. So this is gonna be an enhancement to another area that we'll be able to use because it'll be slightly weather protected. We actually envision, even envision using it in the winter. We have a year round preschool nature school programs. That go year round and they try to be outside as often as they can. So we, we see it as an enhancement to what we're doing because a lot of our programs over there fill. But it will also open up opportunities for other programming also.
Okay, and Peter, is this similar to the last one where basically? Two hundred eighty square feet, but if it was two hundred, they wouldn't have to be here with a special permit?
Exa- exactly.
Okay.
Kathy, did you already build the foundation?
We haven't done anything.
That was a good one.
We should have.
Built it a little bigger.
All right, anyone else have any questions? If not.
Got a quick question.
Sure, Dave.
Roof is gonna just drain off a lot, right? No gutters on the pavilion. Ask a question.
He's asking if there are gonna be any gutters on the roof or is it just gonna drain off onto the lot?
Tom or?
It, it's, the pavilion itself is fourteen by twenty. We made the pads sixteen by twenty two. So that any water coming off the roof would land on the concrete as opposed to landing on soil. And creating a mud bath for poor Patrick to have all those little muddy kids running around. So the pad's bigger than the pavilion itself.
All right, anyone else? If not, this one also is a public hearing, so I would ask if there are any members of the public that want to. Comment on this application? Anybody from the public? Right, if not, any final questions?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, there is a, there was an email submitted by Mary Frazier. In support of the application, and I think that was in your packet.
Yep. Yeah, and she's across the street on Prospect.
Yep.
All right. Anything else from anybody? If not, is there a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion, close.
All right, motion by Jim, second by Mike to close the hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, hearing is closed. Would someone like to make a motion to start discussion?
I, I will make a motion to start discussion.
What is your?
I would, I would propose that we. Approve the, the application as submitted.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Mike, seconded by Joe. Does anyone have any proposed stipulations, comments, questions?
This is a no brainer.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah. Yep.
I'm just glad the kids during the summer have some shade.
And thank you, Tom, too, for like clarifying, because I did have a question I was gonna ask about the pad underneath the structure as well, but. You guys, you know, thank you to you and Kathy as well for your presentation.
All right. If there's nothing else. Motion made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look.
Yeah, and just. Just a special shout out to the friends to thank you for funding it. We really appreciate it.
No problem. We can't wait to get it done. Thank you all.
All right, have a good evening.
You too.
Right, other business, nothing is listed, minutes, nothing is listed, staff reports. Peter, do you have anything that you? Want to share with us this evening?
I just, I, I did send out an email, but just FYI, we have moved the Salute to Business event up from normal. It's normal time in December to October twentieth. This year, we're gonna do it at the River Restaurant. This year, we're gonna do it at the River Restaurant, uh, as they have both outdoor and indoor, uh, capacity. So if anyone, uh, wants to attend that, please, uh, let me know and we'll add you to the, uh, the roster of invitees. Uh, the only other thing to bring to your attention is we received, uh, three, uh, zoning regulation amendment referrals. One from the city of Hartford and two from, uh, the town of Newington regarding some changes to their, uh, regulations. Um, just, uh, for your information, uh, the one in, one of the ones in Newington is in response to the recent, um, uh, Public Act, uh, twenty-one, I think it's twenty-seven regarding, uh, eliminating, uh, minimum parking requirements for, uh, different forms of residential development. So, uh, just FYI on, on that. Other than that, uh, nothing else to report.
Peter, can, can you just give me a little more understanding of what that minimum requirement's about?
Sure, um, there was a recent, uh, set of, uh, legislative changes, uh, most of which was designed to eliminate, uh, restrictive, uh, zoning, uh, requirements for, uh, to, to assist with the creation of more affordable housing across the state. Uh, one of the, um, one of the changes affected minimum parking requirements. Um, they felt that, uh, many communities had overly restrictive, uh, minimum parking requirements for different forms of residential development. And the statute, uh, is basically stating by a certain point in time, towns have to review those regulations and make changes that, uh, coincide with the legislative, uh, requirement. So in this case, Newington is, um, reducing, let me just turn to that real quick. Is eliminating, uh, and reducing some of their parking requirements. Um, I think that, I think the statute said for certain, uh, size, uh, number of bedrooms, you can only require one parking space per unit. So their, uh, present regulations are a little more restrictive than that, so they're knocking them down in certain cases to match that, those requirements.
Yeah, I mean, essentially the statute says that if, if you have parking requirements for residential dwellings, you can't require more than one parking space for a studio or a one bedroom. And you can't require more than two parking spaces for any dwelling unit of two bedrooms or more. So if, for example, you have a requirement that you have one and a half parking spaces, you know, for a one bedroom unit on the theory that, you know, it might be a couple living there, or you wanna have, you know, flexibility or, you know, just basically be conservative in terms of the number of, uh, parking spaces that are going to be required. If you want to have a parking requirement that is higher than what the state statute provides, you have to actually go through the effort of opting out of the statutory requirement um, by a two-thirds vote of the Planning and Zoning Commission and a two-thirds vote of the legislative body of the town, which would be, you know, like the, the town council or the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Yes, what he said.
And so if, if, how have we dealt with that in Weathersfield?
Uh, we haven't gone through this process yet. Um, just so you know, we did get an affordable housing, uh, planning grant. So we'll be going through, uh, a process in the relatively near future. And we'll be looking at, uh, all of our present regulations regarding affordable housing and, and making some, uh, recommendations for you guys to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks very much. Um, next item, public comments on general matters of planning and zoning. Anybody from the public wishing to comment on anything that, uh, wasn't already discussed on the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if I mentioned this at the last meeting, but with us tonight is our new recording secretary, uh, Lauren. You can see her, uh, on the screen there. She did provide, um, the minutes from, uh, last meeting. I just didn't get a chance to review and edit them to include them in tonight's package, but we'll do that for your next meeting. But I wanna welcome Lauren aboard.
Welcome, Lauren.
Welcome, Lauren. Yeah, that was the member of the public that I was trying to get to speak, so.
Yeah, we know Tom.
Yeah, and he's always shy. Alright, uh, no correspondence pending applications. Looks like we have some good and fun and productive things coming up here.
Yeah, it should be a, should be a busy meeting at the, at the next, next one. Um, so we may have to just kind of adjust the agenda to get through everything. There's, there's some, a couple of them might be a little bit weighty.
I know that, um, we have an interim town manager. Do you think that there's any reasonable likelihood that we'll be getting back together in person before too long?
Actually, I had a, we had a staff meeting today and, uh, I did pose the question because the council is now meeting in person, if that, uh, also applies to the boards and commissions. Uh, so I, I've already advertised your next meeting as a Zoom meeting, but the meetings after that, uh, if the commission is so inclined, can be in person. So I wanted to, um, have you discuss that and, and give me the appropriate, uh, direction on that.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I, I guess, you know, it, it would be nice to get back together in person. But if we have a, you know, a really light agenda, you know, it might be worth just sticking with Zoom to ensure that we have a quorum because our, our one in-person meeting in the last twenty months, you know, we barely managed to scrape together five people to participate.
Okay, so let's, um, you know, depending on the agenda, let's assume that the, uh, first meeting in December, uh, we'll try and make that in person.
Okay. Yeah, cause I mean, you have the, you know, leaving aside the whole pandemic situation. I mean, you have the, the legal noticing lead time of basically a month before we could pull the trigger on anything anyway.
Right.
Alright, does anyone else have anything they wanna talk about this evening? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh, yes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Alright, thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Go Red Sox.
I was waiting for that.
I like that, the last word.